Chairman was involved in a little bit of an accident on the way over here this evening, so he's just running late. And I know one of our members may be running a little bit late too, so we're gonna kind of work this out as we go along. So this is the January 26th, 2015 continuation hearing of Berliss County Examen Board of Appeals review of Berliss County Examen case issue 714 Pleasant Ridge Energy LLC, Pleasant Ridge Wind Energy Project. Our recall is Michael Cornell, John Bittsman here, Richard Kiefer, Diana Ann Iverson here, Howard Zimmerman, Joan Musson, and Gibson Allison.
Okay, I want to make a brief announcement, just so we're clear. The ZBA may conduct public hearings without a court being present, holding a public meeting such as what we're doing tonight does not constitute action by the board, so that's one reason we're gonna go forward, and we have a witness who's come from some distance. Mr. Luca Hanson, are you ready to proceed?
Yes. We would call Aaron Grun, G-R-U-B-N, to the stand. At this time, I also have UCLC exhibit 60, 61, and 62 to hand out.
You want to read it?
You want to read it right hand, you sworn in? You solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give is, in this case now, in hearing, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you guys...
Thank you. My name is Aaron Grun. Since 1991, I've been a principal with the Urban Economics, Market Research, and Land Use Policy Research Consulting Forum, Grun &amp; Grun &amp; Plus Associates. The firm was founded in 1970, and its offices in Deerfield and San Francisco. For public sector and private sector clients, the firm conducts market, economic, financial, and fiscal and economic impact research and analysis. Our work emphasizes helping clients make beneficial land use, real estate investment and development, and economic development and public policy decisions. I have later contributed to many economic impact studies and reviews of studies, including the impacts into the Page Airport, the closing of the Motorola cellphone factory in Harvard, and the construction of highway interchanges in Kane County. Other examples of studies the firm and or I have conducted were evaluated, related to the impacts of manufacturing activities, corporate headquarters, retail office, and industrial space developments, residential and hotel developments, auto malls, science and technology developments, hospitals, colleges and universities, power plants, and other infrastructure. As I hope the range of example paths and signs suggest, Grun &amp; Grun &amp; Plus Associates is not dependent upon a single land use or beholden to a single industry, and has established a reputation for independent, objective research and analysis. I believe the report entitled "The Economic Impact of the Pleasant Ridge Wind Energy Project" by Dr. Loomis should not be relied upon because it does not disclose essential information, is misleading, and overstates the potential economic impacts of the proposed development. The proposed development will be unlikely to generate significant ongoing economic impacts at Livingston County. In the very first paragraph of the report Dr. Loomis provided, Loomis states, quote, "The basis of this analysis is to study the direct, indirect, and induced impacts on job creation, wages, and total economic output," end quote. This is a standard purpose of impact analysis. Direct and indirect and induced economic impacts are widely presented in terms of employment added, labor income or wages associated with the added jobs, and economic output, which is economic jargon for the value of all goods and services produced or sold. Now indirect impacts, sometimes referred as multiplier impacts, effects relate to changes in the number of jobs, income, and output produced, based on interdependencies among economic sectors in a geographic area. Businesses buy products and services from each other, creating indirect impacts in other businesses. In other words, a change in one industry or business ripples through other industries or businesses. In addition to these indirect or spillover effects, indirect impacts also include what is sometimes referred to as induced impacts, or the impacts of increased household spending that result from the creation of additional jobs income. The wind energy model Loomis uses however to present the impacts does not follow standard generally accepted convention for presentation of direct versus indirect impacts. It should be noted that the Loomis report on the postulated economic impacts of the proposed wind energy development does not comprehensively portray impacts that the proposed development may induce. If the project is not feasible to develop and operate, none of the projected positive economic impacts will occur, and yet no showing of feasibility has been made. But keep in mind that economic impacts are effects on the level of economic activity in a given area. In this case, the relevant area is Livingston County, not the state of Illinois as a whole. Because Livingston County is the area in which the project would be cited, and that would bear the burden of the use, and according to the Loomis reports, the labor would be primarily drawn from within the county, which however is not likely to be the case for reasons I will explain. Economic impacts do not measure the valuation of changes in amenity or quality of life factors such as health, safety, recreation, air and noise quality, or view amenities, reductions in the quality and quantity of which can work to reduce the economic vitality of a place. The Loomis report does not address changes in such factors that the proposed wind energy development may induce, nor do economic impacts matter fiscal impacts. For example, the proposed wind energy development will increase the demand for public services, but the cost for providing services are not considered in the Loomis analysis. More does the Loomis report address the potential impact on property values of the proposed wind energy development. The report provides no indication of demanding access to the power, or that it will be financially feasible to develop and operate the proposed project. I understand that the developer has not identified a power purchase agreement with a creditworthy buyer for the power. Now on page two of the Loomis report, the author refers to limited wind energy developments because of that, quote, "uncertainty surrounding wind energy policy," end quote. While the report does not provide further information, I believe Dr. Loomis is referring to certain federal tax credits and other incentives that have expired or are in danger of not being renewed. In the absence of such federal incentives, most alternative energy developments are not financially feasible at this time. In addition, the economic impacts predicted by Dr. Loomis are not likely to be misleading and overstated for reasons I will explain hence. Key inputs of the impact model are not specified, and cost estimates, including estimates of the percentage of project materials and labor that will be coming from within Livingston County, were apparently supplied by the developer, the sponsor of the proposed project, who commissioned the report. Input-output models themselves cannot estimate from where direct introduction and operating expenditures will be sourced. An assumption or estimate must be made by the analyst using the model. Accordingly, the results derived from impact models are sensitive to changes in assumptions about the percentages and amounts of direct materials and labor that will be supplied from within a geographic study area, in this case Livingston County. When the project component is the source of these assumptions, it would be especially appropriate to reveal the key assumptions and back them up. Because the basic inputs and assumptions were not disclosed in either the report or the testimony, we have no way of conducting our own impact analysis, or validating appropriateness of individual inputs in your models by identifying the multipliers produced by direct impacts. Loomis estimates that during the construction phase, the equivalent of 384 full-time jobs would be created in Livingston County. The analytical generally accepted convention is to present economic impacts in terms of direct, indirect, and induced effects. The Loomis report indicates that 34 full-time jobs will result from induced effects, in other words, the effects of personal consumption expenditures made by workers in their households. The direct and indirect effects of construction activity however are not separately presented. Multipliers are not presented for employment, income, and output in the Loomis report, though as I noted, that was the claim purpose of the report. The generally model includes only the direct impacts associated with onsite construction activity. The economic impacts of purchasing wind turbines and related equipment are recorded in combination with other indirect supply chain impacts, and the sum of these is described in the Loomis report as, quote, "turbine and supply chain impacts," or, quote, "indirect impacts." The impacts reported in the Loomis report do not allow for a multiplier ratio of direct to indirect economic impacts to be calculated. We understand that the turbines will be obtained from GE, but GE does not manufacture turbines in Livingston County, and therefore this large project development component input will not generate any economic impacts within Livingston County. The author states on page six of the report that improvements, quote, "include gravel roads to access each turbine, and of up and below surface electrical cabling to collect and transmit the power," end quote. According to the Jedi model Loomis utilized, more than 90% of capital expenditures for wind projects typically offer equipment and materials. Neither in the report nor in his testimony does Loomis identify how much of these expenditures will occur locally, if any, nor does he provide any examples of local suppliers for such equipment or materials. One important reason that construction impacts are overstated and misleading is the construction impacts reported as annual full-time equivalent jobs, but the bottom of page 11 of the Loomis report indicates that, quote, "the construction of the wind farms may actually involve hiring 768 workers for six months," end quote. Such a short period does not suggest a high-quality, ongoing economic employment opportunity, which would give workers confidence to spend money on non-necessities, or make commitments to coming to and remaining in Livingston County. According to the Illinois Department of Employment Security, as of November 2014, the unemployment rate in the county is less than 6%, or only 1,040 resident unemployed workers of all occupations. Therefore, the local unemployed construction base within the county is not likely to be sufficient to provide the amount of short-term labor reported to be needed. It is likely that many of the predicted construction jobs will be sourced to workers residing outside the county, or might be shifting jobs from other sectors or other projects, and therefore would not be new and additional. The discussion with the highly experienced engineer with Westwood Professional Services with significant experience in wind energy developments confirmed that while concrete work or filling in a dirt road with gravel would be done locally, many contractors will bring in workers who have worked on other wind energy construction projects from outside Livingston County. If the developer uses mobile construction crews that move from site to site with specialized equipment and trained labor, then they will hire local labor only to supplement their needs. The Loomis report refers to the Shady Oaks Wind Energy Development in Lee County, but provides no information about it even though we found an economic impact analysis of the project is available. An economic impact analysis of this project was conducted after the completion of construction. In that case, the project's turbine plays were made in North Dakota, the towers were made in Wisconsin, and the contractor was from Minnesota. The contractor is reported to have completed 100 wind energy development projects. Other components were made in China, Ohio, California, and Texas. According to the Shady Oaks Impact Report, which the developer of that project sponsored, the Jedi model, quote, "can be misleading as far as numbers of construction jobs created," end quote. The contractor for the Shady Oaks project used 185 construction workers living within 50 miles of the project, which means workers came from areas outside of Lee County. The contractor reported that all of $35,000 was spent locally to service 60 trucks and vehicles. Correcting for the improper presentation of direct and indirect impacts of the Jedi model, the authors of the Shady Oaks Impact Analysis estimated that the ongoing operations would support 15 and a half direct jobs and an additional nine induced jobs. The Shady Oaks report done after the fact of the project suggests how misleading and overstated are the projected prospective impacts of the Pleasant Bridge project, and how essential information is not disclosed in the report. If resources are shipped away for some other use or activity in the county that is displaced, then there will be no or smaller net positive multiplier impacts than the gross impacts predicted. The gross job estimates presented in the Loomis report do not take into account pent effects on jobs, such as displacement of other jobs while the construction of the proposed wind energy projects, or the impacts of potentially changing electricity or fuel prices that could change the demand for workers and services associated with the plant. Gross economic impacts however also do not accurately reflect the creation of new jobs or income, as they do not take into account the jobs or income creation that would have occurred in absence of the activity being analyzed. Therefore, the Loomis analysis overstates and provides misleading estimates of the impact of the proposed project. The 300 megawatt Streeter-Cayuga Bridge South Wind Farm was under construction in 2008 and 2009, and it came online in March 2010. The 200 megawatt Manook Wind Farm located in both Woodford and Livingston Counties came online in 2012, following construction in 2011. Presumably, the Streeter-Cayuga Bridge South Wind Farm would have created similar gross job impacts as predicted in the Loomis report, but as described in table three of our report, the number of construction jobs in Livingston County declined from 2008 through 2010, and have stabilized at the 210 figures. This suggests the potential that the jobs have simply shifted from one construction activity to another, and did not alter the structure or increase the employment base in the construction sector. Loomis did not apparently attempt to conduct any studies of the wind energy projects actually built in Livingston County or nearby counties to put into perspective the gross figures for a hypothetical project not yet built or operated, and instead relies on employment costs and revenue data of the project developer. Loomis cites a study conducted for an organization promoting the use of wind energy that indicates Livingston County contains five of the 22 industries, which would potentially produce one or more components of a wind turbine. What we do not note is as a comparison, Cook, DePage, Kane, Lake, McCannery, Winnebago, and Will Counties each contain 16 of the relevant 22 industries. As I indicated earlier, Loomis does not state which firms and such industry sectors in Livingston County, if any, the developer indicated would be utilized to build or operate the proposed wind energy project. Livingston County is relatively sparsely developed and does not contain major collaborations or clusters of engineering and design and wind farm equipment and construction material firms. Livingston County's own comprehensive economic development strategy in its 2014 report indicates industry clusters which should not include engineering and design and wind farm equipment and construction materials. Similarly, it is unlikely that the components of the wind supply chain would relocate for a single project lasting six months. I draw this conclusion not only because of the short duration of the construction project, even assuming it's feasible to build and finance in the first place, but also because most firms now are seeking to exploit scale economies that yield greater returns than savings and transportation costs. Neither the report or testimony of Loomis provides any business justification for why there would be a significant relocation of the supply chain to Livingston County, nor is there any evidence of this having occurred in prior reported projects such as Shady The indirect ripple effects of the limited duration construction project are likely to be overstated, given the size and composition of the county's economic and retailing base, and that stores, for example, are unlikely to open new stores or expand stores because of a short-term construction project that will not yield ongoing purchase and power increases. I'll now cover why the more important ongoing impacts are likely to be overstated, misleading, and even if accurate, but not represent a significant positive impact to the local economy. Loomis estimates that once construction is completed, and the wind energy project is operating, 13 jobs would be created on-site in Livingston County directly from operations. The model was then used to forecast that another 56 local jobs would result from, quote, "local revenue and supply chain impacts." As with the construction period impacts, despite the initial claim of the purpose of the study, the Loomis report does not specify how many of these jobs would be created directly versus indirectly. An additional 23 ongoing jobs are forecast to result from the induced effects of worker and household spending. Loomis forecasts that the operation of the wind energy project will increase the total earnings of county residents by approximately 4 million, while the output of the Livingston County economy would increase by nearly 20.1 million. Because the economic impact estimates are not presented by Loomis in the accepted manner, the total impacts of the direct effects and the two types of indirect effects, one generated by industry to industry purchase and sales, and one generated by expenditures by employees and wages and salaries, cannot be divided by the direct impacts to obtain the multiplier or ripple effect. Loomis did not reveal the data assumptions utilized in either the report or his testimony, and therefore his findings cannot be validated. Given the lack of access to the necessary data and the costs that would be involved, we did not prepare an independent, objective economic impact analysis. But based on our review of the Loomis report, the Shady Oaks Impact Report, and the employment and other data we have reviewed, the gross impacts will not be as high as predicted by the Loomis report, and the net impacts will not alter the economic base to provide a justification for improving the project. The Loomis report and the discussion in testimony fails to describe how much of any of the non-implanned parts of the Jedi model are locally based. The information provided in the report and testimony Loomis provides appears to be misleading with respect to the local share estimates. Given the open nature of rural counties' multipliers, or the indirect effects of the direct impacts should be much smaller than those included in the total impacts, especially given the large leakage of purchased inputs and expenditures in wage and salaries. Typically, the rounds of spending associated with the multiplier would be smaller in number of rural county, and thus the sum of ripple effects is likely to be smaller. For example, income for jobs directly created on-site, spent on retail and other goods, is more likely to be spent outside of Livingston County, where greater concentrations of retail outlets and services are located. A larger amount of retail space in Bloomington, Peoria, and Canton Key can be expected to capture income spent on retail goods not readily available in Livingston County. But what page 10 of the Loomis report states to explain the reasoning behind the impact estimates is, quote, "As workers receive income, they may decide to purchase more expensive clothes, along with other goods and services from local businesses," end quote. The model and analysis does not take into proper account the nature of the Livingston County economy, and the proximity to larger economies nearby with more of the kinds of stores at which more expensive clothes could be purchased. To give you another example drawn directly from the Loomis report of why the impacts are misleading and overstated, page nine in the Loomis report states, quote, "The banker who finances the contractor are both considered indirect impacts," end quote. However, if the contractor selector is not local, and no indications have been provided that the contractor will be local, the banker will not be local. And further, no indications given that the banker will hire more bankers, or otherwise increase hiring and incomes locally because of financing the contractor for this project. Our review of the Jedi model indicates, for example, that the default Jedi model estimate for ongoing personnel expenditures for a 243-megawatt wind project in Illinois is $887,000 per year. The Loomis report suggests he adjusted the default assumptions upwards to $993,000. Material and services are estimated to represent the remainder, or about 80% of typical O&M expenditures, according to the Jedi model. These primarily consist of insurance costs and replacement parts and equipment. Again, the default assumption in the Jedi model is that none of these ongoing expenditures are likely to be made in a small county. It is not clear to what extent the estimates include impacts associated with non-payroll O&M costs, which Loomis did not reveal in the report or testimony. In addition, the Jedi model includes in the local revenue and supply chain impacts during operations the revenue from property taxes and revenue to equity investors. The Jedi model default assumes that revenue to equity investors leak out of the local economy, but that 100% of property tax revenue and land lease revenue remains in the local economy. The Loomis report does not specify if these default assumptions in the Jedi model were changed or adjusted to reflect actual local conditions. The project developer is headquartered in Chicago, and therefore revenues to equity investors should not be considered to be captured in Livingston County. Any increase in property taxes or other local tax revenues could be offset by decline in property values, or the taxes could be used in ways that do not increase local economic activity, such as paying municipal debt or adding to reserves. The convention and accepted practice in impact analysis is not followed in the Jedi model or Loomis report, in which it is to present tax impacts separately and not as part of indirect economic impacts. But even if the undisclosed local share and multiplier estimates were reasonable, the total projected economic impacts are not significant relative to the size of the local economy. The gross job impacts, not the net, would be only one-half of 1% of the total jobs, while the gross income impacts would represent only a third of 1% of the county's earnings. The key point that the Loomis report did not put into context is that given the size of the county's employment and income base, the projected impacts are not significant. And in conclusion, I'd point out that previously built and operating wind energy projects have not altered the economic structure or caused the economic base to increase in Livingston County, and the Loomis report and testimony provides no justification to believe this proposed wind energy project would produce any different results. What the review of economic employment conditions contained in our memorandum report suggests is the importance of recognizing that no short-run construction project is likely to have any sustained positive economic impact, and the proposed project can be expected to be no different. And the direct onsite, ongoing impacts, that is 13 jobs, are negligible relative to the employment base in the county. Given the overstated and misleading economic impacts presented in the Loomis report, and that the report does not cover the other type of impacts that that could have more ramifications for the county, the Loomis report should not be relied upon to make land use decisions that have long-run and ongoing economic, social, environmental, and other important consequences.
Thank you, Mr. Grun. Please, at this time, which other wants to...
We just wanted to note that during his testimony, two more of the Illinois Appeals members attended the meeting, Michael Cornell, Joan Musson, and at their presence at the meeting, so we're glad to have him here.
All right, at this time, I guess you have any questions for Mr. Grun? All right, yeah, we'll reserve our opportunity to question Mr. Grun. Yeah, government... All right, Mr. Blazer, do you have any questions for Mr. Grun?
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Mr. Grun, your presentation sounded like substantially a verbatim recitation of your report, is that correct?
I have to compare, but certainly not just my complete report.
Okay. Do you have Dr. Loomis's report up there? Okay, go ahead.
I have the copy.
It's, well, we'll be referring to it. This is the one that's actually in the two. For the record, that's Pleasant Bridge, exhibit one fifteen, correct? Up at the top. Is that correct, sir? It's Mark Pleasant?
Yes.
Okay. Did you review that entire report in preparing what you submitted?
I believe so, yes.
And are you the only person who worked on the report that you submitted?
No.
Who else worked on it?
Colleagues in my office.
Who wrote it?
I take full responsibility for the report.
That wasn't my question, who wrote the report?
Well, I just told you there were several of us who worked on the report. I wrote most of it, but I also had assistants from other colleagues.
What was the nature of that assistance?
Standard assistance in doing my research and analysis, so reviews of, they reviewed the report to help track down other studies such as the Shady Oaks report that I referred to, a review of the Jedi model inputs, a standard model from the department that provides the report, that sort of thing.
So, did you review the Jedi model inputs, or did some of the else of your...
Two of us did.
And just from the title of your report, correct me if I'm wrong, and this is UCLC exhibit sixty-one, it's intended to be comments, findings, and conclusions about Dr. Loomis's entire report, correct?
The parts of the report that make comments, I guess.
Okay. Well, you did, again, you did review the entire Loomis report, correct?
Right.
Okay. What else did you personally review in order to prepare your report and testimony?
I reviewed the employment data that's reflected in our report, the unemployment data. Give me one minute. There's a series of articles, newspaper articles that I reviewed, there's the Illinois Wind Turbine Supply Chain Report, June tenth, Center for Renewable Energy Review, the database of prevented projects by the Center for Renewable Energy.
So, you're talking about the references in your report?
Yes, sir.
Were you reviewing any of one of those references personally?
Yes. And so, I think there was also some articles, including, get it out because it's an important article that describes the limitations of input-output models, footnote date on page seventy, I actually read that article, that multipliers avoid exaggerating impacts with the Bay Regional Station for the Dutch Transportation Sector Journal of Regional Science. I can...
So, you went out and looked for articles that are addressed and put out the models?
Right.
Okay. And that's the one you found?
Well, there are a number of ones. I found that was the one that I cited in that footnote.
Okay. Did you review any of the testimony that's been given in this proceeding?
Yes.
Which testimony did you review?
The testimony that was given to me by the attorney for Dr. Loomis.
That's me, so I assume you mean the attorney for UCLC, Mr. Luke Hans?
His, Dr. Loomis's testimony, it was sent to me.
All right, that's the only thing you reviewed?
In addition to the things we've just discussed.
Okay. What are the elements of a community's infrastructure?
What are the elements of the community's infrastructure?
Yes.
Well, there's hard infrastructure, like roads, airports, bridges, utilities and so forth. There's soft infrastructure, which is education, the social capital of a community, education of a community, educational facilities and services.
Oh, safety.
Safety would be a service of broadly construed, that'd be infrastructure.
Water and store services?
Yes.
Schools, you mentioned, education. What's the impact on a community if its infrastructure deteriorates?
If infrastructure deteriorates, it's going to have less good infrastructure, and all that goes along with that is less good infrastructure.
You're going to have to keep that up there, I didn't hear that.
If, if infrastructure deteriorates, it'll have less good infrastructure, and therefore less whatever goes along with whatever the particular decline in infrastructure is.
Well, for example, would a deterioration in infrastructure have an impact on the community's real estate values?
It could.
And would that then have an impact on the community's tax base?
It could.
You have your report there, right?
My report, yes, sir.
Okay. Page one, you say, "The analysis of the economic impact of the proposed wind energy development does not comprehensively portray impacts that the proposed development may induce."
Correct.
Now, are you saying that Dr. Loomis's report does not address all economic impacts that will result from this project?
I'm saying that there's, no, I'm saying that that may be, that as well, that is true, but the point that I'm trying to make on page one is more simple, that economic impacts do not measure all impacts of a project, that's all I was trying to say.
Well, for example, Dr. Loomis's report doesn't mention the economic benefits agreement that Invenergy has set up to enter into the county, right?
Correct.
And you are aware that Invenergy has indicated that they are prepared to enter into such an agreement with the county, correct?
I'm not familiar with that detail.
Well, let me read you a portion of the transcript in this proceeding, it's from November seventeen, twenty fourteen, from Mr. Parsick, counsel, it's page forty-five, line twenty-three to page forty-six, line four. "I'd like to briefly mention the fact that we are prepared to discuss an economic benefit agreement, an agreement that would add millions of dollars to Livingston County's economy, and it would be based on the agreement that Eberdrola put together for the Deer Run Project." You're not aware of that?
Haven't studied and not aware of it.
I haven't seen it either, so if it exists, I'd love to see it.
This is based on testimony, that's all we're talking right now.
Well, he already said he didn't review Mr. Parsick's testimony, so if you want to ask him about something he actually reviewed, that'd be a great idea, I think.
Well, part of what we're discussing here is what he did review and what he didn't review, so anyway, going to page eleven of your report, Mr. Grun.
Maybe because I don't have it.
You don't have the transcript? I'm sorry.
I don't actually have the reports.
I don't have the agreement you keep talking about, we've tried to ask about it, and no one who was in the meetings is willing to come up here and talk about it.
I don't know where that's coming from, Mr. Cornell, let's go, all right, let's move on, shall we?
We've got one other thing that we need to address. The specifics of this economic agreement that's made reference to has been questioned by the zoning board member, and Mr. Parsick declined to comment on that. Is there any, has there been any solidification of details that at this point could be commented on?
No, there have been, for the record, Mr. Cornell, there have been no solidification of details because there have been no negotiations, nor can there be with the county until this board makes its recommendation. However, Mr. Parsick, as I just indicated in, on the record on the first day of this proceeding, indicated that Invenergy is prepared to enter into an agreement similar to the one that was entered into with the Deer Run Project, and this county is fully aware of what the terms of that agreement were, but we're going to get there in a minute. So, we don't know if it's a dollar or a million dollars, we're going to get there in a minute.
But given, given the information that's been presented to date, there is no economic impact that, that Mr. Grun could in fact input into his model to determine a more reliable result, is that correct?
That is not correct, and I think we'll get to that in a few minutes. So, if I could proceed, Mr. Cornell, I think we're going to get there.
All. Okay, so moving forward, the economic impact that, that you've alluded to can, cannot be further discussed, there's, there's nothing out there, no one's testified to it. He can't, he can't input that into his model, so any questions that potentially address that are, are not allowed. There, there's no, there's been no, in good faith, working towards that.
Well, except that there is evidence in this record regarding what that agreement is, because we know what that agreement was, that's also in this record, so.
All I ask right now is that you...
What the agreement was that's in this record, I'm sorry, I got lost. Eberdrola's not in this record?
I'm sure you did, but the evidence...
Is Eberdrola in this record, that, that agreement?
In terms of that agreement, certainly are in this record, yes, they are.
What's each of them?
We'll get there, counsel. Counsel has advised me that, in fact, my definition, or, that's all irrelevant, it wasn't spoke of in Loomis's testimony, nor the economic benefits, so any further discussion about that at this point is, is not going to be, we're not going to hear.
Could you go to page eleven, please, Mr. Grun?
Yes, sir.
Previously built and operating wind energy projects have not altered the economic structure or caused the economic base to increase in Livingston County, and no basis is given to suggest a proposed wind energy project will significantly positively improve the economic and employment base. Which projects are you talking about here?
I'm referring to the, the ones I just mentioned in my testimony, the projects that were built in Livingston County that are actually cited as examples of wind energy projects in his report, and I'm going to try to find the page quickly on our report, page six are examples of wind projects that were built in this county previously.
So, are you, are you talking about the Cayuga Ridge Project?
Right, the, the one that was built in two thousand eight, nine, opened in two ten, and there was another, the one that was in both counties, that came along in two thousand and twelve, I just described it in the testimony, it's on page six here.
So, when you say projects in that quote that I just read, is the only one you're talking about, Cayuga Ridge?
Well, I would, I, I'm telling you that there's, whatever the projects were, it's not transformed the economic base of the county. Look at the data, which is on page, let me just show you where I'm referring to, starting on page thirteen, there's historical employment by jobs by industry in Livingston Counties, so any projects since two thousand one through two thousand twelve, the ones I'm specifically referring to are the two I just cited on page six, which occurred in the years that I just cited, and page thirteen shows, and page fourteen of the report shows that it did not alter the economic base of the, of the county.
All I'm trying to find out is which project are you talking about other than Cayuga Ridge?
Okay, I mentioned the second one that was on page six that I referred to, there's two. There's the Coyoga, and there's the Manoke Wind Farm located in both Woodford and Livingston Counties.
Now, you spoke previously, or you spoke during your presentation, in talking about Cayuga Ridge, and you said that jobs in Livingston County during the time the Cayuga Ridge was built and came online in two thousand, around two thousand eight, is that correct? That's when it came online?
The testimony was it came online in March of twenty ten.
And it was built in two thousand nine?
Yeah, I just refer you again.
I'm just asking if you recall your testimony?
It's on page six, just in case it helps.
And you, you said that jobs in Livingston County during that period between two thousand eight and two thousand ten nevertheless declined, is that correct?
I was very... Does that mean... Give me one more minute, I'm sorry. What I showed is, if you look at table three of our report, page I just referring to, is that the number of construction jobs, I just want to be more precise, I said construction jobs declined from two thousand eight, two thousand and ten, and stabilized afterwards in the two thousand and ten figures. The actual jobs did decrease as a whole, non-farm employment, from two thousand eight to the subsequent years until two thousand eleven. So, even with the construction activities of the two plants, construction jobs declined, and overall, non-farm employment declined.
Could you go to page twelve of your report?
Yes.
You say here, "Following the advent of the Great Recession, which officially started in December two thousand seven and ended in June two thousand nine, with lingering high unemployment effects continuing particularly through twenty ten, unemployment rose but has since been reduced to less than six percent of thousand forty labor force numbers unemployed." Do you see where I was reading?
Yes.
So, are you saying that the Cayuga Ridge Wind Farm had no positive impact during the Great Recession?
I'm saying it did not alter the economic base to result in the actual construction sector growing, and it could have merely displaced other jobs, or those jobs would have been taken up somewhere else, and that I wouldn't know.
You don't know that?
No, but you wouldn't be able to say it had no impact, I'm just pointing out that if you just look at construction, it did not increase construction jobs, which if it was to have a significant impact, you would have expected it to. That's the point we're trying to make here, it's not going to significantly alter the structure of the economic base.
Would you, would you disagree with the statement that the economic recession during that period of time in Livingston County would have been worse without the Cayuga Ridge Wind Farm?
It's a question of what other alternative activities might have occurred in place, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with it, but I wouldn't agree with it. It's a function of what other jobs either would have occurred, or, or if the jobs moved from one sector to another because of this short-term thing. What it didn't do was provide any ongoing economic change to the structure of the economy. And I wouldn't expect any short-term construction project to do so.
Mr. Grun, I've handed you what's been marked as Pleasant Bridge, exhibit three hundred. Have you ever seen that document before, or that article?
If it's not referred to in my report, which I don't believe it is, I'm not sure I have seen this, I would have to go back and compare, but just looking at it doesn't ring any bells.
Okay, I'm going to read you something that's in the record from Pleasant Bridge, exhibit forty-one, and I'll ask you a question about it. "There is evidence that but for the Cayuga Ridge Wind Farm, the recession would have been worse in Livingston County. In an article in September twenty ten by Stephen Graff entitled VP One Hundred, Illinois Wind Farm Breathes New Life Into Businesses, Larry Vaupe, that's V-A-U-P-E, Director of the Livingston County Economic Development..." Larry Vaupeau, that's V-A-U-P-E, Director of the Livingston County Economic Development Council, discusses the success of the loan and grant program using the $6 million payment to the county for the Cuyahoga Ridge development. Local businesses were loaned money to stay open, and new jobs were created. In addition, there were construction jobs created, and the article quotes Livingston County Board Chairman Bill Fairfield as estimating that for every 10 wind turbines, one full-time maintenance position was created." You're not aware of that evidence, sir?
Well, I'm aware from reading this article that the impacts were not because of the operations and construction activities of the facility, but the parent agreement that you may have been referring to earlier, whether there was cash given out. But that wasn't because of the, I'm just reading the article, wasn't because of the operations of the construction activity. It sounds like the county board elected to subsidize other businesses with cash that was related to this, looking for the word that you mentioned earlier. It wasn't from the operations. It looks like they were just giving cash, right?
Well, let me read that last line I wrote again. "In addition, there were construction jobs created, and the article quotes Livingston County Board Chairman Bill Fairfield as estimating that for every 10 wind turbines, one full-time maintenance position was created." Do you have any basis for disputing that statement, sir?
No, but it sounds like it'd be less than one Menards store. How many jobs is one, the 10 turbines in that article?
If you could, I'd ask that you describe the witness just to answer my question.
He wants. He's an expert, and he has the right to explain his question.
I didn't ask him anything about a Menards store.
I'm putting this in context, which again, one job for every 10 turbines may be well less than one home improvement store's jobs employed. It doesn't say how many total jobs there are relative to the size of the economy. I'm not disagreeing with the statement, I'm just pointing out it doesn't-
That's all I wanted to know, I think.
It doesn't put into context what that means.
Well, I was asking whether or not you agree or disagree with that statement, or you have any basis for agreeing or disagreeing with that statement.
Answer it. I heard a lot about Menards and home improvement stores.
Mr. Blazer, answer it.
Would information like the information that I just gave you have been important for you to consider in your assessment of the economic benefits from a project like this?
No.
Page one, comments, findings, and conclusions. "Economic impacts do not measure the valuation of changes in amenity or quality of life factors, such as health, safety, recreation, air, or noise quality, or view amenities. The report does not address changes in such factors that the proposed wind energy development may induce." Do you see where I was reading that in the report?
Yes, sir.
What changes in property valuation have you referred to?
I have not studied the potential impacts on any of these issues. I'm just referring, the point I'm making here is, economic impact analysis covers the effects on economic activity in a geographic area, and it does not measure valuation effects of these other factors. It's all I'm simply pointing out.
But just so I understand the answer to the question I asked you. You haven't assessed any property, any changes in property valuation?
I have not assessed evaluation of changes in any of the amenity, quality of life factors, health, safety, recreation, air, noise, quality of view amenities, or property factors, was actually the fourth paragraph down on that page. I did not, I'm just pointing out that this report that I was asked to review does not cover any of these other types of impacts.
And you're disinterested?
Absolutely.
Okay. You're not an appraiser?
I do, I'm a real estate economist, so I do value property, but I do not do any appraisal or property value assessments in this case.
Are you a licensed appraiser in the state of Illinois?
I just told you, I'm a real estate economist, not an appraiser.
Have you ever conducted an analysis of property value impacts from detrimental conditions?
Yes.
How many times?
I have to count, it's been a number of times.
Okay. How many times were the alleged detrimental condition of a wind farm?
None.
Changes, I think we established this a little while ago. Changes in property valuation would impact the amount of real estate taxes generated, correct?
Yes.
So you haven't assessed health factors, correct?
As I just said, yes. I've not studied any of the factors listed on page one. I just pointed out in the Lewis report, that, I'm just pointing out that economic impacts are not the end-all, the be-all, there are other factors to be considered on that. I'll stipulate, again, I've not studied any of the factors listed on page one that you're asking about.
Going on on page one, "Nor do economic impacts measure fiscal impacts, that is, changes in government revenues and expenditures. For example, the proposed wind energy development will increase the demand for public services, e.g., public works, sheriff, fire, administration, and other public services. But the costs to provide these public services are not considered in the analysis." Do you see where I was reading from?
Yes.
All right. Going back to your statement about fiscal impacts, what public works demands are you referring to?
As I mentioned, the other report mentioned that there were 60 trucks and vehicles that were serviced. Vehicles and trucks would generate impacts on the roadway maintenance and the need for replacement. There might be traffic enforcement and incident reports that would be generated. There might be litter that would need to be picked up. These are examples of public services that, again, I'm merely pointing out that economic impact reports don't cover. It's a different topic.
Have you ever read the Livingston County wind siting ordinance, the ordinance that governs this proceeding?
I don't believe I have.
All right. So you don't know if it says anything about roadway impacts?
You know, I manage to sleep at night without reading that.
I'm glad you find this comical, Mr. Brun.
Objection, absolutely.
I was just asking the answer, ask the question.
Yeah, let's just move on. That does apply for both sides, so please just answer the question that's asked.
So, you have no idea what the status is of any negotiations that maybe I'm going with either the county or the townships regarding road use agreements, correct?
Objection. This is the same area, we don't have any agreements to look at. I don't, I haven't known of that information either.
I'm just asking if you knows.
I don't. I doubt, and again, I'm just pointing out what economic impact reports do present and don't present.
What sheriff demands are you talking about?
Again, I'm pointing out that the report did not address these issues. Sheriff demands would be life safety and equivalent of police services. If there's accidents, if there's construction injuries, if there's equipment stolen, if there's damage done in the course of construction of property, it's not the side of the wind turbine. These are just standard municipal services. And I'm pointing out that the Lewis report does not cover that, and I certainly will stipulate, I have not done an analysis of the impacts on sheriff services.
How many times have the sheriff or emergency service has been called up to the White Oak Wind Farm in Clinton County?
I don't know.
How about the Grand Ridge Project in LaSalle County?
I do not know.
Bishop Hill Project in Henry County?
I do not know.
What about the Cuyahoga Ridge Project in this county?
If it helps, I'll stipulate, I don't know that sheriff costs in any wind energy projects in this region, you might want to ask about it, I've not checked. I'm merely pointing out that they may arise, and it's a part of municipal services that are impacted.
Bottom of page one, you say, "Given the relatively small employment impacts predicted by the author, less than 1% of total existing jobs in the county, the failure to consider social, fiscal, and property impacts of the proposed development, which collectively are likely to be far greater than the predicted economic impacts, constitutes a significant omission of the report." Do you see where I was reading from?
Yes, I do.
Are these social, fiscal, and property impacts the same ones we've just been going over that you had specifically assessed?
Yeah, I'm certainly telling this.
Okay. And you haven't quantified any of those?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Who told you that they're likely to be far greater than the predicted economic impacts?
Well, it's my experience of having done a variety of impact analyses, that when I look at how small the ongoing employment is, 13 jobs, that it's prudent to conclude, or reasonable to conclude, given the apparent nature of these proceedings, that these other impacts are likely to be far more significant. You know, and there's certainly examples of alternative energy projects where these other effects are probably more important than the economic ones.
I did glance through your resume, so maybe you can help me in that. Is that experience based, or is your assertion at all based on your experience in assessing the impacts of wind farms?
Well, my experience is based on assessing other alternatives, including solar farms.
That wasn't my question, sir. Is your opinion based at all on your experience in assessing impacts from wind farms?
It is, to the extent that I, in preparing the material, I did review articles on the impacts of wind farms. But I have not done a specific impact analysis for wind farms.
Ever?
Ever.
Page two at the top. The economic, do you know how many of those assessments Dr. Lewis has done?
His report included his resume, and it looks like he specializes in serving the wind industry. So I assume he's quite a deal.
Mr. Blazer, if I stopped you right there, would you be opposed to taking a 10-minute break?
Absolutely, sir.
All right, so I've got 7:50.
Could you turn to page two of your reports, sir? Actually, I'll just return it to turn there. You say at the top, "The economic impacts predicted by the author are misleading and overstated." Do you recall that?
Yes.
And then at the top of page three, you say, "The analytical generally accepted convention is to present economic impacts in terms of direct, indirect, and induced effects." And we know now, based on your last answer, that you don't have any experience in wind projects. I assume this is something that you gleaned from some of your other work in land use or other types of work that you've done?
I've done many economic impact analyses, and I certainly know the convention for INPLAN and RINING and other models that the JEDI model doesn't comply with. This is referring to the standard way economic impacts have been presented since the beginning of doing impact analysis. There's nothing controversial about this statement, and it's well-recognized in the literature that the JEDI model does not conform with it.
Your attorney, or excuse me, not your attorney, Mr. Luca has handed me, before you start, UCLC Exhibit 62, which is entitled "The Economic and Fiscal Benefits of the Shady Oaks Wind Farm." Is that something you provided?
I didn't write the report. I've mentioned finding that and reviewing, and researching and reviewing Dr. Lewis's report.
I'm just wondering, why was it that we were given this? What's the point of this?
It's referred to in the report I've done, sourced, and I referred to it in the testimony I gave earlier. I have no idea why, you know, it was sourced, it was directly available, if you've looked at my report.
So you relied on Exhibit 62 in some fashion in preparing your report?
I did refer to it. That's the discussion of, this report refers to, it was done after the fact, and it refers to where various components of the project were made.
Do you have a copy of this there with you? I can give you this one, that's okay?
No, don't be it.
It's okay, it's right here. It's all right. As long as you promise to give me mine there.
It's just easier, I don't want to forget.
Okay.
We're okay.
And when you were relying on this report, did you read it?
Yes.
Could you turn to page 12?
Yes.
At the very top, "Jobs and Economic Development Impacts." "To measure the overall local and national economic impact of the Shady Oaks Wind Farm project, the Department of Energy's National Renewable Energy Laboratory's Jobs and Economic Development Impact, JEDI, Wind Energy Model, was utilized. Table 1 summarizes Shady Oaks project data. Economic multipliers used within the model are derived from Minnesota INPLAN Group's employment professional. The JEDI model is the standard in the wind industry, and is thus more useful in comparing project impacts." Did I read that correctly, sir?
Yes, you did.
Let's go back to, let's go to Professor Lewis's report. Well, first, page three of your report, let's go there first, starting with the second sentence. "The Lewis report indicates that 34 full-time jobs will result from induced effects, or in other words, the effects of personal consumption expenditures made by workers in their households. The direct and indirect effects of construction activity, however, are not presented." Do you see where I was reading from?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, if you could turn to Professor Lewis, or Professor Lewis's report. Table 2 on page 11. Now that lists the direct and indirect jobs, right?
Not consistent with the convention on how INPLAN and other much more established models than the JEDI model would list them. It does, but I'm trying to explain, the way it's defined here is different than the INPLAN models.
Is it consistent with the JEDI model, which is, as we just established, is the standard of the wind industry, and is thus more useful in comparing project impacts?
Objection for him. First of all, that wasn't established. All we heard was ran out of the report. Did he agree that it was established? I don't think I heard that.
He relied on this report.
So he relied on everything in the report, he's got to take his gats, huh?
In any event, if you just let me expand, then the literature on INPLAN and RINING and other standard models for impact analysis is much more developed and much longer in history for quite a few different types of uses than the JEDI model, which is done to promote wind energy, but the way, it has far fewer projects, and for example, there has been peer-reviewed pieces, but for example, one article only covers 2008, and for a geographic area, it doesn't include this area. So I'm just saying that, yes, they're presented, but in the format of JEDI, but only for wind industry proponents is the JEDI model used. It's not the standard model for doing impact analysis. And they're not multiplier effects presented.
Are you, going back to table two, which I've all been asking you about, are you aware that the direct jobs are labeled "project development" and "onside labor" impacts?
Yes.
Okay. And indirect jobs are labeled "turbine and supply chain impacts," right?
Indirect jobs as defined by the JEDI model, yes.
And if you go to pages 9 to 10 of Dr. Lewis's report, the definitions for direct, indirect, and induced jobs are given there, correct?
I'm sorry, tell me the pages, please.
Nine to 10.
Yes, this is the definitions for the JEDI model, not for... Yes.
And do you disagree that those definitions are accurate within the context of the JEDI model? And do you disagree that those definitions are accurate within the context of the Jedi model?
I'm sure he's got it right.
So, is your issue with how the jobs are classified as direct or indirect?
It's one of the issues, yes, because we don't have standard multipliers that we can look at. If they were, what is usually considered direct is considered direct, and what is usually considered indirect is indirect. And if some items are not usually considered indirect or direct, or any, it would be much easier to evaluate. And this is how Jedi models misleading compared to the conventional models that are much more established.
Do you disagree with the total number of jobs created?
I indicated, say so again, that the total jobs are likely to be overstated as leading.
Likely to be? Have you actually assessed whether they are?
It's perspective, yes. The whole report is explaining the reasons why the jobs are likely to be misleading, overstated, because for all the reasons I listed just a few moments ago in the testimony describing the report, that's the whole purpose of the report.
Since you say "likely to be," I'm trying to find out whether in fact you determined if they are overstated.
There have been no jobs created, so this is all prospective. And I'm certain that the jobs that are stated as gross jobs are going to overstate the number of actual jobs created, Adam served them out, and that's what I tried to justify.
But then again, wouldn't be based on any experience in the wind industry, since you don't have any, right?
That's right. It's just based on experience since nineteen seventy, the firm doing economic impact analyses of a wide variety of land uses, including other types of energy projects.
And in that forty-four-year period, let's not just include you, let's include your entire firm in that forty-four-year period since nineteen seventy, has anyone in your firm assessed the economic impact, or the job impact, or any impact from a wind farm?
No.
Do you agree that Parniac is the largest municipality in Livingston County with a population of eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-one?
Sounds good to me.
Followed by Dwight with forty-two sixty?
Again, I don't have a plan, because that sounds right.
And Fairbury with thirty-seven fifty-seven?
Right.
All right. Are you aware there's also a village named Forest in Livingston County?
I believe so.
Do you know that or don't you?
I have a list of every community in the county. I would think you'd be telling me the truth on this, all except...
Would you agree with me that all of those communities are fairly close to each other?
Yeah, except you're very far, I have no reason to deny the truth.
Livingston County, for example, isn't as big as the state of Nevada, right?
That's right.
Okay. Do you agree that in those cases where a proposed new economic activity or construction project is located near other activity centers, input-output models such as Jedi can be reasonably dependent on, even when they deal with areas as small as a single county?
I think that's fundamentally the problem. The smaller, the more rural, the less urban an area, the more prone to exaggerated effects, the Jedi model, and for that matter, any impact model is going to be. This is well-established in the academic literature. The multiplier effects leak out more into less urban areas. So any model is less, going to be less precise, covering a smaller area or a rural area than, say, an urban area with more built-in linkages toward the back of the open water economies.
So you disagree with this statement?
Yes.
You said Groom, G G plus A, has two offices?
Yes, sir.
Does your California office know that you disagree with that statement?
I will now.
You're aware that your company performed an economic impact analysis for the Hidden Hills Solar Project?
I'm aware that we reviewed an economic impact analysis for this project.
Well, you didn't just review one, you actually did your own, or your company did, are you aware of that?
It was a critical review in which we, as in this case, did analysis that was used in the review, and...
Well, here, we'll come to the chapters, Mr. Blazer, let's move on to this one. It's page eight, second paragraph, toward the bottom. Where your company said, "Simply put, in those cases where a proposed new economic activity or construction project is located near other activity centers, input-output models such as Jedi can be reasonably dependent upon, even when they deal with areas as small as a single county." Now, that's the statement you disagree with now, is that correct?
Because you put it out of context.
That's not my question.
I would ask that the expert be allowed to review, to read the next sentence into the record, which actually explains that statement.
Right. You've completely mistaken this out of context.
Well, actually, that's my next question. That's my next question.
Mr. Blazer.
Small area analysis is notorious for overestimating local impacts. This comment was made by Professor Keeling, the Director of Regional Economy and Application Laboratory at the University of Illinois. That's, his in a nutshell was much more succinct than what I've been trying to explain. And in the case of the quote "activity centers," you were suggesting this county has. That's not what is asked when we refer to "activity centers." None of these areas would be considered an activity center the way an urban area would be.
So you don't consider the city of Parniac an activity center?
It's very small. It has lots of missing linkages in its economy. It has to have lots of inputs brought from outside of the economy. It's not a fully self-contained system as the way larger areas, more urbanized, larger areas would be. With all due respect to this community, it's just not an activity center or major agglomeration.
On this Hidden Hills project, your company worked with county departments likely to be responsible for providing services to the proposed project. And your company forecast the likely cost to the county of that project, is that right?
I have to read this again, that actually the county staff did work with us, but were primarily sources of actually estimating the cost of municipal services.
I'll make it easier for you, Mr. Blazer, rather than having to dig through that report. This is a page from your website. You recognize that?
I did, I put it on the website, and I certainly recognize it.
So you'll see that your description of the Hidden Hills project from your website says that your company worked with the county departments likely to be responsible for providing services to the proposed project and forecast the likely cost to the county of the project, right?
Right.
And you didn't do that here, correct?
Right, I did not do that.
Your company also combined those estimates with your prepared estimates of likely revenue to the county from the project to estimate the net fiscal impact of the project on the county, right?
Correct.
And you didn't do that here, correct?
I already said that, yes.
And in that case, your company also examined the annual amount of property taxes that the project was generating, right?
And yes.
Okay. And actually, if you go back to three oh six, the actual report, the assessment of property tax revenue is on pages six to seven, correct?
Well, page six is referring to the study by the other group that was found to be overstated in terms of the property tax. And then on page seven is, I believe this is the page that shows that the property taxes were likely to be much lower than what is represented by the projects reported.
And you didn't do anything like that here, right?
No.
Let's go back to your report. This is bottom of page three, going to page four. "Because Livingston County represents a relatively small area in terms of built space and non-agricultural activities, the area is missing some economic or industrial sectors present in larger economic regions, and therefore, we would expect the multipliers to be comparatively low." Do you see where I was reading from?
I remember saying that, I'm sure I'll find it. That's what I was just trying to describe to you.
All right, well, then, you do know that Dr. Loomis used the Livingston County INPLAN multipliers in his analysis, correct?
He refers to them. The actual inputs and what numbers he used and where he used them in the model wasn't described in the report, it wasn't revealed.
Well, do you have any reason to believe that he didn't use the Livingston County INPLAN multipliers?
It's the question of where he used them, how he used them, and what adjustments he made or didn't make. I wouldn't know. But I can tell you, having done these, that small changes in assumption or local share estimates can have very, can produce large changes in outputs or results.
All right, well, that's not my question, sir. My question is, do you have any reason to believe that Dr. Loomis did not use Livingston County-specific INPLAN multipliers in his study?
Sure, he's an honorable man, and he said he used INPLAN. I have no reason to doubt he didn't use INPLAN, it's not the issue.
Could you go to his report, page eleven, second paragraph? He says that here, doesn't he? "Two separate Jedi models were run to show the economic impact of the Pleasant Ridge Wind Energy Project. The first Jedi model used the twenty-twelve Livingston County multipliers from INPLAN." Do you see that?
I do.
Okay. Did you read the portion of... And you do know that that's data specific to Livingston County, right?
The data is specific to Livingston County, but the inputs that drive the linkages to the multiplier effects are the role of the analyst, and that's what's not described in the report. And that's what drives the results. If you don't put the inputs in the right categories and the appropriate amounts, you will get different results than if you put them in different locations in the model or different amounts.
And do you have any reason to believe that he didn't put the inputs in the right places?
We don't know what he did. We don't know, we don't know what percentage of materials and labor were assumed essentially to leak out of the economy versus the standard. What we do know is compared to the Jedi model defaults, that the expenditures on payroll were adjusted upward to be higher than the default that the Jedi model would provide, and that the construction dollars were five times higher than the Jedi model default inputs would produce. And again, that's a question of what the analyst does, and as I understand it, he was relying on information from the developer, none of which was described in the report.
But again, you have no reason to believe that he didn't accurately input the information. All you're saying is, you don't know.
I don't know whether the information that he put into the model was right, and...
And you also don't know that it's wrong.
I know that the results are higher than you would anticipate, given the size and composition of the economy, and given the Jedi default would suggest it should have been lower. So the inference is, I'm not suggesting he did anything untoward. I'm suggesting that the data from the developer may have provided a higher local share estimate or otherwise skewed the results, not because he didn't put it in, but where it was supposed to be put into, but that may have not been the right inputs to begin with.
There were a lot of mayhams in that answer, just to be clear.
Objection, argument.
You've never worked with a wind farm developer, so you have no idea what information might be generated from an experienced wind farm developer, correct?
I've worked with enough developers of every land use to know that proponents of projects can be tempted to put the most optimistic scenario as inputs to consultants. I've been, how do you try to do that with me?
That's not my question, sir. So I would ask the court reporter to reread my question.
You've never worked with a wind farm developer, so you have no idea what information might be generated from an experienced wind farm developer, correct?
The first, is it, it's two questions in one. The first question, again, stipulate I never worked with a wind farm developer. The second question is, I therefore wouldn't know what information a wind farm developer would provide. And that I do know from having looked at what other studies have provided, and as well as Dr. Loomis's report, and how he described what he was given without actually specifying the details.
We'll get to other studies in a few minutes. You did say you reviewed Dr. Loomis's testimony, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Phil, excuse me, I have to use my, I can't use my computer. December nine, twenty fourteen, starts at page six to eight, line twenty-four. This is Dr. Loomis's testimony. "Question: Did you adjust the INPLAN data to reflect the local economy here in Livingston County?" Answer: So when the Jedi model was built in, it has those state multipliers. So if you just download the software that the National Renewable Energy Labs has, it already has built-in those INPLAN multipliers for the state. So in order to do a county-level analysis, you have to, we have to, "I purchased the INPLAN data for specifically Livingston County, and then I took and aggregated all of those different sectors down to how the Jedi model aggregates different sectors, and input that into the Jedi model so that we could get a Livingston County-specific number." So it's using those multipliers for this specific county. Did you review that testimony in preparing your report?
Yes.
What are the components of a wind project?
I mentioned some of them. Turbines, blades, cabling, gravel, roads, concrete, the like.
Is there a local supplier of gravel or crushed stone in Livingston County?
I testified that likely that concrete would be an example, if someone supplied locally, so I'll stick with that.
How about fuel?
I know that fuel would be another example, something that would be local, and in the case of the other project, that reports that thirty-five thousand dollars was spent on servicing fuel.
Rebar?
It could be.
Steel and aluminum?
Whether they're in Livingston County?
Yeah.
And going to be provided by a contractor, I don't know.
Are there general construction companies in the county?
I'm sure there are. They're not ones that have done a hundred wind energy projects or done the kind of projects that typically are hired, or contractors are typically hired by major wind farm developers.
Are you saying that the sole construction activity in this project will be erection of wind turbines?
No, I'm just, you were asking about general contractors, you know, that would be the... Reserves.
Hello?
Hello.
I think we just went to our expense. Are there excavating contractors in this county?
Again, I would assume so. I haven't, I have to look at more data to tell you what each firm was. The main point is that the report did not disclose any of these kinds of questions on whether local suppliers are going to be used.
You do know that the Jedi model is based on and updated using the implant model?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Are you aware of the fact that the Jedi model is based on the implant model? And when the Jedi model is updated, it's based on implant model updates? Are you aware of that?
It's, it's, it does use implant, but it's its own model. It's definitely implant model. Otherwise, the implant model would just be used.
Let's look at, this is November 19th, starting at page 283, line 23. My methodology for the economic impact was to use the jobs and economic development impact model referred to as the Jedi model. This model was developed by the National Renewable Energy Laboratories. And as you can see, the plan number that I used there, it is updated and it's based on the implant model. Implant is a standard economic impact analysis software. There's two leading brands of software, Implan and Remy. Implan happens to be the one that is used as the basis or platform for the Jedi model. And did you read that testimony in preparation for what you do here? Yes?
So, yes.
Okay. And you do agree there are, there are two leading brands of impact analysis software, Implan and Remy?
They're two of the leading ones, yes.
Okay. Now, you've referred a couple of times to peer-reviewed literature. And you said, when you were substantially quoting from your report, that it is, the shortcomings of the Jedi model are well-recognized in the literature. Do you remember saying that? I tried to write that down carefully, so I think you did say it. Do you remember that?
I didn't say it exactly like that, but.
Words to that effect, that's, okay. So, you're not aware of any peer-reviewed follow-up studies that were done after the fact to determine whether or not an analysis like the one Dr. Loomis did using the Jedi model is in fact valid?
There have been studies, not for, as far as I know, the Livingston County in this timeframe, but there have been after-the-fact studies that were really econometric studies looking at county-wide impacts of wind energy projects in terms of what was projected and what, what the results were.
Well, what would be relevant to you would be a study that tested Livingston County or similar counties to test the Jedi model's accuracy, right?
It'd be more relevant if the actual, if actual projects that were reported in the same way. So for example, when the companies report jobs, if they were reporting in the same way that the jobs attracted the Jedi model, that's been one of the problems. That would be relevant. Any, any after-the-fact, like the Shady Oaks report, that would provide context would be helpful.
I'm looking at page four of your report, second paragraph. One of the questions you ask is, has the Jedi model been recently tested in Livingston County or similar counties to gauge its accuracy? You see that?
Yes.
All right. Again, referring to Dr. Loomis's testimony. This is December 9, Phil, page 608, starting at line 6. Question: Have you tested the Jedi model in agricultural-based homes to gauge its accuracy? Answer: The Jedi model has been calibrated or tested. It was in, it was in, actually, a peer-reviewed publication recently where they did take the Jedi model, looking at those input-output sectors, and then looking at actual employment numbers, I believe from a Bureau of Labor Statistics or state numbers. That was not done here in Illinois, but the researchers that developed the Jedi model did do that. It was in a peer-reviewed publication. I believe it was in energy policy and in energy economics that the article appeared. Do you remember that testimony?
I do, and I also remember looking at that study. It wasn't, if I recall correctly, it wasn't, it wasn't covering this era or this, if I remember that particular citation, this area or this time.
I think you can say somewhere we'll get to that study in a few minutes, but. Back to Dr. Loomis's report, page 10, last paragraph. This methodology was been, validated by a paper in the peer-reviewed economics literature in the article "Ex-post Analysis of Economics Impacts from Wind Power Development in U.S. Counties." The authors conduct an ex-post econometric analysis of the county-level economic development impacts of wind power installations from 2000 through 2008. They find an aggregate increase in county-level personal income and employment of approximately $11,000 and .5 jobs per megawatt of wind power capacity, which is consistent with the Jedi results at the county level. And he cites Brown 2012. Do you see that?
Right. And again, this study that I'm referring to is 2000 to 2008, as you just said. And it actually covers the Plains and Rocky Mountains, which is not the same geographic area as Livingston County, which is obviously here in the Midwest. And it's for data that 2008, we're obviously in 2014. And so that's why I didn't think it was as helpful as it would have been had it been more recent for this geographic area.
We'll get to that. Since you're a lawyer, I assume you know what ex-post means.
After-the-fact, I should learn.
Okay. Or backward-looking, right? Exhibit 304 is the study you looked at, right?
I'm not sure.
Excuse me?
Yes.
If you could go to the page number 1746. Left column, second full paragraph. Efforts have been made to overcome these limitations to input-output models by better tailoring their data specifically for the sectors under analysis and adjusting the local purchase coefficients to more reasonably reflect the available local supply of goods and services for a given project. For example, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory has taken these issues into consideration in its development of the Jobs and Economic Development Impacts Jedi Wind Model, used by, among others, Lance, L-A-N-T-Z, and Tegan, T-E-G-E-N, 2008, to perform a sensitivity analysis of wind power-related economic development drivers and the economic development benefits from wind. So just starting here, just so we can agree on what this study is looking at. Among other things, it's looking at input-output models like the Jedi model, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Page 1752. The second paragraph under conclusions. Let me know when you're there. Second paragraph, right.
Right.
This study is the first that we are aware of to empirically test for the economic development impacts of wind power installations in U.S. counties using an ex-post econometric approach. We applied this method to a large region of the country that hosts a large number of existing wind power projects, mainly in the Great Plains, to test a hypothesis that wind power installations increased county-level income and employment growth between 2000 and 2008. The analysis does not address questions concerning state or national net effects, nor does the analysis seek to provide a comprehensive benefit-cost analysis of wind energy of the type that would be desired in making local, state, or national policy decisions. Such an analysis would need to investigate the myriad potential costs and benefits of wind energy development. Instead, the present paper provides an empirical assessment of net local economic development impacts, while avoiding many of the potential weaknesses of other methods that have been used to assess such local impacts. And again, I think we can agree what the study is looking at is the specific local impacts using an input-output model like Jedi, correct?
I believe it's actually doing an econometric analysis of the Plains area back in 2000 and 2008. And I'm not sure it actually was doing the same kind of specific perspective analysis that Dr. Loomis's report was doing.
Well, that's true, because this one is looking backwards to see whether or not the input-output model in fact correlated with actual experience, right?
In the, in the Great Plains area. For a period of time, that's very different than the period of time today.
Okay. Well, let's see what the study concluded. Page 1753. Let me know when you're there. Left column, first full paragraph. Taking into account the endogen-
I always have problems.
Endogeny- Endogeny of location decisions of wind power development. We find an average aggregate increase in annual personal income of approximately $11,000 per megawatt of wind power capacity installed over the sample period, and an average aggregate increase in net county-level employment of .5 jobs per megawatt. These figures translate to a median increase in total county personal income and employment of .22% and .4%, respectively, for counties with installed wind power over the 2000 to 2008 period. Do you disagree with that conclusion?
Well, I would just merely point out that that conclusion is consistent with my conclusion, that the job and earnings impacts relative to the size of the county are rather negligible. .22 and .4 of 1% is not significant. If significant means altering and increasing the economic base of the region. Those are very modest increases compared to the size of any of these, of this or other counties. It's just not a big increase.
So are you saying that this study did in fact, from a ex-post perspective, validate the results of the input-output modeling that was done?
No, I'm saying that the study shows that the economic impacts of wind energy farms are negligible in terms of, if significant, which to me means doesn't change the composition and structure that improve the economic base, this is a very, very small percentage. It's less than 1% change. And that to me, I, again, I do think it's a problem that was econometrics and was for a different period than today and for a different geographic area. And it's one of, this is one study, the only study. And for me, for science to be validated, it should be more than one, one study. It's not, it's not a sufficient base of empirical analysis to give me comfort. I'm not saying they did anything wrong or that why it was done to promote the wind energy that that is suspect, but I would feel much better if there were more of them. And even if we take what they've said, it's just a small number.
What did you say you suspect?
Even if we, if this one study turned out to be replicated by lots of other studies, it's still a very small number.
No, I, I thought you said that you suspect that this study was done to promote wind energy?
Well, it's done by the folks who are getting paid to promote the wind energy. This, I mean, this is the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. This is the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory. These are not economists that don't have, that are independent. They're all getting paid by the wind energy and the energy commissions.
I see, so.
I would feel better if there were a variety of economists doing these studies for different periods or different geographic areas coming up with similar results. I would not on any science depend upon one study. And as you've pointed out, this was the first and only econometric analysis. And I would just feel better if there were more of them.
Okay. I'm trying to make you feel better. One more strike, one more thing on page 1753.
Mr. Blazer, how you doing with the questions over there?
Probably 20 minutes.
20 minutes more?
A half, half hour. I had other witnesses come in for this. The tire cross was supposed to be for a half hour. I understand that it's not the easiest thing to do, but we're now on somewhere about an hour and a half, and you still got another 20 minutes.
And I frankly got a two-hour drive and an early plane flight to go out of town, so.
Mr. Cornell, I have a right to cross-examine this witness. He's said a lot of things, and I have a right to cross-examine him.
All right. Mr. Blazer, you are correct. You do have the right to cross-examine the witness.
I will move as quickly as I can, Mr. Cornell.
I asked that you expedite the process. I believe we have another witness with Mr. Lukans this evening.
Okay.
I would have gone if I knew this was going to be two hours. I mean, that's the problem I have.
Right, right. We all have drives home, and it's bad out there, and I want to get us out of here as soon as we can. So, Mr. Blazer, with that, you keep moving.
I see what gets good off here. Top of page five of your report. If the proposed project is not market and financially feasible to implement and conditions are not satisfying, none of the construction or operating impacts predicted will materialize. No showing of feasibility is made by the author in the report. What's your experience in the marketing of electricity for utility-scale wind projects?
I, none.
And what is your experience with the financing of wind projects?
None.
Is it your conclusion that this project is likely to not be market and financially feasible?
It's my conclusion that the Loomis report did not provide a showing of market and financial feasibility. It's my conclusion that the report explained that limited wind energy development has occurred, and it referred to government subsidies in the absence of which wind energy and solar energy, for that matter, tend not to be financially feasible. So given the own statements in the report, the lack of showing of a creditworthy buyer for the power, and in light of recent events, their oil and gas prices have dropped dramatically, are all its basis for concluding that the project is not market financially feasible. And otherwise, you would have put it in the report.
So are you concluding, have you concluded that this project is likely to not be market and financially feasible?
I'm saying that his own statement suggested, reviewing his report.
And I'm asking for your conclusion. Have you concluded that this project is likely to be, to not be market and financially feasible?
It's not relevant to my, it's, I don't need to make that conclusion. I mean, I'm pointing out that if it's not.
Mr. Prudential, would you please direct the witness to answer my question? Answer the question. No, he's not. He just said.
He has somewhat answered the question. He's just extrapolating a little bit more. He needs to, shorten up your answer, and we'll, he'll help us out too. So yes or no, or I don't know, are excellent answers.
I have not reached a conclusion about to mark- I have not reached a conclusion about the market and financial feasibility, no showing of feasibility is made by the author of the Loomis report.
Are you saying that if the project isn't built, there won't be any benefits?
There won't be any economic impacts.
If it's not built?
If it's not, if there's no construction, there will not be any jobs created from the project.
Do you know what the value of Wind Energy's installed projects is?
No, not off the top of my head.
Do you know what the value, what the company's equity is in those projects?
Objection, Ralph.
Objection. He's just made a number of statements regarding the feasibility of this project. I think it's an appropriate area. He didn't make any statements about the feasibility of this project.
We'll sustain, sustain the objection. We just need to move on.
All right. Do you know what the renewable portfolio standard is?
Same objection.
He's talking about feasibility, and I can't ask him a question about the renewable portfolio standard? Just because Mr. Lukans is in a rush? I'm not, no, that's, okay. That's very the problem. The point is, he has said a number of times, he didn't do this, he hasn't made that analysis. There's no doubt about it, he didn't make the analysis. He's only testifying what Loomis did in this regard. We don't have the hundreds of thousands of dollars that Wind Energy has to do this. Except for the fact that in his report on page five, he talks about uncertainty surrounding wind energy. I'll read it into the record. Page five.
Already in the record.
In fact, on page two of the report, the author states, "Because of the uncertainty surrounding wind energy policy, the industry only installed 1,087 megawatts in 2013." The author does not state that the policy has been changed in 2014 to remove the uncertainty that has kept wind energy projects from being feasible to build.
I'm referring to Dr. Loomis's statements in that section.
Okay. So you have no independent knowledge about anything you said there?
I manage to try to understand the question.
Objection. All right, you guys. Hold, hold on. There's too many unknowns out here. The applicant has not testified to the value of the project, nor the saleability of the energy. So you can't ask the witness, there nowhere in the record can we find the total value, nor the saleability of the power. You don't have a contract for that. So you're asking him to speculate they're being on unknowns. So with that, we need, we need to move on. You can, you can continue in these questions, but make sure they're valid and they don't infer anything that we don't know. We've asked those questions, and they haven't been answered. We've asked, we've asked the value of individual wind turbines, how much they cost. Mr. Lukans has asked that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cornell, but Mr. Parson testified to that last week in response to Mr. Griffin's questions.
He did not. There is nowhere within the record will it show what the value of each wind turbine
Still on page five, Mr. Grun, you say, "The report provides no indication that demand exists for the power, or that it will be financially feasible to develop and operate the proposed wind energy facility," uh, wind energy project, excuse me. Have you read any of the testimony in this case regarding the financial feasibility of this project?
No, I'm referring to the report here.
Okay. So on the same paragraph, you say, "We understand that another wind energy project has been proposed but not constructed in Livingston County, suggesting that obtaining power-offtake agreements that make construction and operation feasible to implement is not assured, and that existing competing supply alternatives will tend to hold down obtainable prices, which will make clearing the feasibility threshold that much more risky and uncertain." Now that's your statement, right? That's not a statement from Dr. Loomis's report?
Right, and it's referring to the articles and database on the note five, page five.
Do you know what company that was that you're referring to?
Well, Iberdrill.
And have you spoken with anyone from Iberdrill to find out why that project wasn't there?
No.
Do you know whether that has something to do with energy policy or another reason?
It refers to the article I read, said was having trouble finding a buyer for the project. We generally look for a long-term contract before we begin construction, but not always. We don't have a long-term buyer for that project, and speaks to market condition and prospective developments. That's what I'm figuring worth in the article, I'm unfamiliar with other issues unless it's referred to in the article.
And what year are you referring to for those market conditions?
Well, it was an August eight, 2008, 2014 issue of the paper.
Okay. And do you know when that project was permitted?
Well, it said, according to the article, I'm beginning this reading from page five in 2009, it's received a special use permit to construct 100 wind turbines from Assamia in 2009.
And do you know when that project was withdrawn?
Not, not off the top of my head.
If I told you 2010, would you have any reason to disagree with me?
Tell me anything, I'd have any reason to disagree with you.
Page six of your report, second paragraphs, second paragraph. The gross job estimates presented in the report do not take into account net effects on jobs, such as displacement of other jobs by the construction of the proposed wind energy project, or the impacts of potentially changing electricity or fuel prices that could change the demand for workers and services associated with the plant. Are you talking here about employees or about jobs?
Well, the nature of the analysis presented are both. If you have fewer employees, you're going to have fewer jobs. That's the whole linkage issue or multiplier issue that's the subject of the document Loomis's report.
Well, are you saying that because a county resident stops working at, let's say, as a machine operator at Donnelly, or a, an electrician at Caterpillar, to become a wind turbine technician, that machine operator job or that electrician job will disappear?
I'm saying that it would not be a net new job by moving over to the wind energy project, and whether the job disappears or not depends on a host of factors, including whether by the new power facility taking labor, or whether it raises prices beyond what the other employers would be able to pay. So there's a bunch of factors, and whether they use that opportunity to automate or otherwise become more efficient, not replace the jobs, I really can't tell you. But it wouldn't be considered a new or net job if one is, if they left one job for another, it's considered a new net new, the way the models work.
Even if Donnelly replaces that machine operator, or Cap replaces that electrician?
If it replaces it, then, and this new, the new job stays, then there would be a gain of one.
Natural gas right now is at pretty low prices, right?
Yes.
Historically low.
I don't follow natural gas prices over time.
Wholesale electricity is also at low prices, right?
Again, I believe prices are low in all the utilities.
Has any wind farm in Illinois that's been built ceased to operate, has it today?
It hasn't now.
You said before, when we were talking about the peer-reviewed study, that actual projects reported would be relevant. Remember saying that a few moments ago? I've handed you what's been marked as plus ridge exhibit 124, Wind Energy Development in Illinois, June 2012. And you'll note it's, page four, footnote four of your report, this is, this is the study that you, or this is the report that you reference in that footnote, isn't it? Oh, no, it's not. You say June 2010. Looks like you looked at an older one, huh?
Yeah.
Have you read this one?
I frankly don't recall.
Page eight, third paragraph of your report. You say, "We suspect that the induced economic impact estimates presented for construction and ongoing operations may be overstated if the author assumed that 100% of the wage payroll expenditures will remain within the county." If I told you that Dr. Loomis did not assume 100% of expenditures will remain within the county, would that address your suspicion?
It would depend on the amount by which he assumed would not stay, that it would depend on the actual number that wasn't provided in the report.
What percentage would you assume?
Not in position to tell you.
On page 11, you talk about the fact that the projected impacts are not significant. Do you see where I'm referring to page 11 of your report? How many jobs would a new industry need to bring to Livingston County for you to consider as significant?
More than one-half of 1%.
Is there a threshold?
After, I, I need to do a little more studying after this longer time here, and sort of how one of the Supreme Court justices defined pornography, they know it when they see it, and I know that one-half of 1% is not seen in-
Does it vary by type of project?
It certainly would vary by type of project. So for example, we recently did a study for research and development, engineering use in Coe County, and the average salary was $95,000, and it was a significant research organization, buying inputs from within the county which was located, and had to have relatively high multiplier effects as a result. So yes, the type, the type of business or type of activity could have a profound impact on the type of quality jobs and the duration of the jobs.
Okay, could you go to page six of exhibit 124, Economic Wind Energy Development in Illinois, June 2012, that I handed you a few moments ago? Could you go to page six?
Yes.
You, you do acknowledge that this is a retrospective report, it's backward-looking?
Since I jumped our car reading this particular one, again, I'm not going to take your word for it. I couldn't spend the time to read, read it, take your word-
I'm only going to ask about one part of it. It's, I guess you call it the third full paragraph on page six.
Mr. Blazer, witness can't testify to this, he hasn't read it. So he can't answer questions regarding it, we don't, he hasn't seen it, he stated that he hasn't seen it, no questions from this.
Do you know how many full-time employment jobs have been created by the wind industry in Illinois?
According to page six, 19,000 jobs.
Do you have any reason to adopt that number?
Don't you have any reason to accept it, or doubt it? I haven't studied it.
You don't, you don't know whether any of the information in this report is accurate, correct?
Again, I'm going to tell you, I don't, I don't recall this report. I looked at an earlier report, apparently, and I'm not focused on aggregate data, because I was looking at a specific report for a specific project, not statewide impacts as a whole, which is a different question than the impacts on the local community.
You're looking for a specific report on a specific project?
That's what Dr. Loomis's report was about, a specific project for a specific county in this one.
So, but if you, when you talked about actual projects reported, what you prefer to see is actual data from an actual project to see what the economic impacts were?
That would have put his report to better context.
Okay. the California Ridge Wind Project that began operations in January 2013.
A report or a-
It's an article reporting information provided by the units of government impacted by that project. Dr. Loomis also talked about this in his testimony, do you remember that?
I believe this article's referring to the impacts on schools, and I did not have any comments on the report about the school, school impacts.
Why not?
Didn't have any comments. They assume he followed the procedures and rules provided for valuing taxes for schools, and no reason to think he would have done that properly.
So as far as you know, the benefits from this project for the Prairie Central School District that are reflected in Dr. Loomis's report are accurate?
As far as I know.
If you just glanced through this article, Pleasant Ridge 123, do you have any reason to doubt the accuracy of the statements by these school officials regarding how can have benefits to these particular school districts?
They're fiscal benefits, they're not economic benefits, but assuming you mean fiscal, I have no reason at all.
Okay. Do you know anything about the financial condition of the Prairie Central School District?
I haven't studied the financial condition of the school district.
He's already testified he was not looking at this. You just answered the question, you said he has no idea, that's fine with me. Well, now you're still an objection, depending.
All right, Mr. Blazer, it is beyond the scope of the witness. Again, his role, I believe, from everything I understand, was to look at Dr. Loomis's report and decide whether, in his expert opinion, it was a valid report or not.
You remember, Mr. Grum, we talked earlier about the statement on page one of your report that economic impacts do not measure the valuation of changes in amenity or quality of life factors such as health, safety, recreation, air or noise quality, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
This document I've just given you, exhibit 301, is a summary of installed wind capacity in Illinois. I just want to ask you one question about it, and I think I've moved it up. It's a section in this document on environmental benefits in the context of what you said about environmental impacts. This says, "Generating wind power creates no emissions and uses virtually no water. Annual state water consumption savings $2,92 million gallons. Equivalent number of water bottles saved $22,315 million." Actually, I'm sorry, I guess that was $2 trillion, 92 billion. I guess the first question was, has he ever seen this? No, I'm just, I'm going to ask him a question about it. Annual state carbon dioxide emissions avoided 5,690,000 metric tons. Equivalent number of cars taken off the road, 1,3,527 cars. Do you consider those factors a negative impact on quality of life factors such as health, safety, recreation, air or noise quality?
I'm not an environmental economist and I'm not an expert on environmental benefits. I also have not seen his reports. I really have nothing to add about it. It's not, I was merely pointing that the reason I'm not here to testify about environmental benefits, I'm just merely pointing out that the economic impact analysis did not describe environmental benefits or costs. That's all I was trying to do, that's all I have.
Take some questions from the audience, it's for the interest of where it's not represented by counsel. Anybody out there? All right, I'm going to throw one question in, and this is from me. Actually, I've got two. Yeah, Carolyn's coming on. The gist of your report is you believe that the Loomis report is overstated. Can you single-handedly, percentage-wise, say how much you might believe? Is it 30% overstated? Is it 25%? Put it into a perspective that all of us in the audience can understand?
I don't know if I'm that smart. Without having been able to do the, seeing the data, I would just say it's significantly overstated.
Okay. We've heard several questions directed at your, I'll say, inexperience with wind projects. Do you believe that there may be any single-handedly exclusive features to a wind project that they may have added in that we're not aware of that could generate the results that they've shown?
Frankly, there's, we've done, as I mentioned, every conceivable land use. The models are describing, they take inputs of investment or stimulus to an economy, and it's like a black box, it produces output. And the output is only as good as the inputs that go into it. There's nothing unique to a wind farm project that would have unique multiplier effects because it's all a function of dollars spent and then respent. And so, whatever those dollars are that are spent locally are what creates the ripple effect. So, there's nothing unique about wind or any other project that you need to know to evaluate economic impact analysis.
Okay. So, this is my last question. As presented in the 304 exhibit by the Lawrence Berkeley National Lab and NREL, they end up concluding that the wind project generates a 0.22 to 0.4% increase in the economy.
Right.
In your opinion, is that what the county could reasonably conclude will be the advantage?
Again, that was for a different area, in a different geographic area, in a different time. But even if it was to be relevant, my main point is it's not going to change your economic base in any significant way. The number of jobs, the reason I mentioned the Menard store is that the number of jobs we're talking about are the equivalent of one large discount store. And I don't think that would change the economic position of the county.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carolyn, go ahead.
Thanks so much. My name is Carolyn Grum, I'm with you in Tonny. I have a couple of questions about the Looking Back Study that was done at Shady Oaks. Was there any study done of whether the money that was paid was actually spent or just saved? Or just spent elsewhere? Was that actually, I wasn't clear for a moment as to whether that was part of that study.
Right. The question is whether the money that was generated was spent within the county or just saved. And I'd have to look through it again, I don't believe it was that specific. What I did do was made a comparison of economic impacts from the Shady Oaks project as reported to the proposed project as reported, and presented the full-time jobs for each, and then the jobs as a function of per-megawatt capacity. And the Pleasant Ridge jobs per megawatt was of 1.21 for construction versus 0.63 for Shady Oaks actual. And the proposed 0.56 versus actual or ongoing of 0.23 for Shady Oaks. So, it does suggest that, at least in the Shady Oaks case, the impacts warrant robust as projected in the Loomis report.
Did the report for Streeter Kyogi Ridge, did that talk at all, the Eberdrola project? Did it compare, what was the direct comparison between what the Jedi model forecast for full-time jobs was compared to the actual?
Frankly, I think I'm losing track of which ones. I think you're referring to the Jedi model as, the authors of that report said that the Jedi construction jobs are known to be exaggerated. And I think I said it more precisely previously.
Do you know of any study where there was like a control area that was looked at that maybe said no to wind, that could be looked at in five, 10, 20, 30 years? I mean, out in California, they've been out there for like 30 years.
Right.
So, is wind energy, there's that burst of activity and so on. But how does that compare to an area, how does that impact an area's future development of other types of industry?
One of the things that impact analysis does not do is identify what economists call opportunity costs, or what would happen, in other words, in the absence of a wind energy project, so, for example. So, to the extent that there's a wind energy project, it by definition will preclude some alternative use that may or may not have higher or greater economic impacts. So, that's sort of the same concept of, you know, controlled experiments which are harder to do in social science as opposed to, you know, physical science. But I'm not off the top of my head familiar with the details of studies that looked at what happened for communities that, say, do not have a wind energy project built, but it's because of that there was some alternative use built. There probably, there's probably cases out there, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Do you have expertise in compatibility of different kinds of development?
As real estate and land use policy analysts, we certainly have a great deal of experience looking at issues of compatibility and how one use might either help or hurt the development of alternative uses.
So, would it be possible to get a report that would analyze the impact on some of the up-and-coming businesses that are being talked about in the area of the wind farm?
In terms of how the wind farm would affect those businesses? We haven't done that, but certainly you could talk to the existing businesses and ask how they could be affected by the project. We haven't done that.
You mentioned opportunity cost, and in that regard, have you, do they take into account the grants that are given to these projects? For example, I'll ask you to assume, I don't know if it's in the record, but for purposes of my question, I'd like to assume that the Eberdrola project got $170 million in federal grants.
I object, first of all, it assumes facts that are not evident. Second, it's beyond the scope of this witness's report and testimony.
I don't think that's your objection.
Objection, it's my witness, not Mr. Blazer's.
All right. I'm not sure how opportunity costs and grants go together. I don't think there's a correlation between that. And there again, we're not clear whether they're getting grants or not. So, can you answer the question that she's posed? Is there any?
I guess my question is, if the grants are coming from the federal government or tax subsidies which require other taxpayers to make up the difference, that is money that has been not spent by that taxpayer, correct?
Objection. It's beyond the scope of his report, beyond the scope of his testimony. I was already precluded from asking about the renewable portfolio standard, about the production tax credit. This is exactly the type of the area that I was precluded from questioning.
This is my, Mr. Blazer, objection. Okay, Carolyn?
He can't object to my witness.
I just objected to everybody's witness.
I will.
Carolyn, can you clarify the question?
Yes, can you clarify the question? I'll put it in context of a term that was used, the multiplier effect, this multiplier. Does the multiplier effect work both ways? If you take money out of an economy, does it have a multiplying negative effect, same as injecting it into an economy?
Yes, if you close a factory or stop funding a program, there'll be reductions in the volume of economic activity. And obviously, if the federal government makes a policy decision to fund one program or one type of project, it's implicitly making a decision not to fund an alternative project or policy. And there'll be winners and losers associated with how the government decides to allocate its resources.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to keep you.
Any other questions from the audience this time? We've got a question. All right, well, he's working on that. County staff, have any questions to this witness? Chuck, you don't have anything?
Do you know, do colleges teach the Jedi model?
I'm sorry, I can't define on what colleges do teach or don't teach on the Jedi model. I'm assuming that, given Dr. Loomis's work, he probably teaches it, but I don't know.
Do you know, in the report from Loomis, did he assume that all the wind turbine new job employees that were created are going to live in Livingston County? Or was there a multiplier for how many were out of county and in county?
I don't know what was assumed about how many workers reside in the county. Is that, is that now?
Okay, so, like in his report, did he say all of them are going to be from the county?
Mr. Slagel, that would be a Loomis question.
Okay.
Yeah, so, not really in his context.
Okay. The school was brought up. Did you look at Loomis's figures a little bit for the Prairie Central budget?
Modestly.
Okay. Because I think, do you remember the average amount that he predicted the school income would draw?
I don't off the top of my head.
Okay. I think it was like 445,000. And the Prairie Central school budget is $23 million a year. That is all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience with questions? All right, Mr. Grum, thank you. All right. Mr. Lukans, it's 9:30.
We've spoke to Mr. Heffely, and he has graciously agreed to come back. I guess I'm a little more upset about this than he is, but he's agreed to come back. The only other thing I think we would all like to maybe resolve at some point tonight, if we have five minutes, is trying to understand the schedule going forward. Mr. Rand is coming Thursday. I have provided his report to Mr. Blazer this evening, and that's who we're bringing in, only him on Thursday.
He will be the only one?
Yes, especially since this was supposed to be the short one that we took all night.
Okay. He'll be talking about?
Sorry, it takes a second to look back at it. He will be talking about noise.
Noise, okay. All right, so, we will expect on Thursday evening that Mr. Rand will be available, 6:30 in February. Is that correct, Chuck, in February? All right, so, we're for sure there. We need to look further out with the schedule. All right, we've got some decisions. So, Thursday we're good, 6:30 Walton Center. Okay, just so that everybody understands, this zoning body will meet that you are in the fifth, okay? We'll meet at the courthouse for this meeting. It's regular business meeting. It'll have nothing to do with the application at hand. So, there won't be anything lost. What'll happen is, is there some, there's a consideration for some amendment of property value guarantees? that when we originally discussed it, we thought all the information would be available to us. At this point, it's not all in, so realistically, we can't make an educated decision. So I believe the board will look to push that further back until all the information's available. So having said that, we're going to go February ninth and February tenth. Okay, February ninth, I'll be here, Pontiac Township High School. February tenth, I'll be at the Walton Center. Both of them will be at six-thirty. All right? So I implore everyone here, please drive careful. It's very slippery out there. Take your time getting home. Oh, witnesses, one other thing. I have the...we had the belief that Thursday evening, other individuals may be able to get up and speak. It's probably not looking like that. Counsel has provided me with a statement, and I believe it's a true interpretation of what I'd like to tell everyone as we look forward to witnesses being able to testify. Just so, I'll give you the information. You can think on it. All right, I'm going to read this. "As a result of the last three nights, four nights, several nights, there is a perception on the part of the ZBA that there has been significant amount of irrelevant information submitted, the presentation of which has consumed a great deal of time. The ZBA is asking all concerned to do a better job of asking and answering questions related to relevant material. In other words, please be more succinct."
Succinct.
Succinct. I don't know about that word. Counsel, thank you. "Otherwise, the ZBA may be compelled to put time limitations on the presentation and cross-examination of witnesses. There comes a time when you have a major point and the rest is just overkill." We haven't had to put time limitations on anything, and I really don't want to. I want everyone to have their opportunity to speak. But if you get off task, you guys have seen, I keep these guys on task. While I try my best, I'll have to keep everybody on task, okay? So with that, understand, we're going to meet on Thursday at six-thirty at the Walton Center. February fifth, this board will meet, not to act anything, not to do anything with regards to wind, nothing short of the property value guarantee that it looks...without the information, we can't do anything more conclusive. And then February ninth, here, six-thirty. February tenth, Walton Center, six-thirty. Okay. Thursday will be Rand for sure. And Mr. Lucans, you'll have a better feel of witnesses for us for the next hearing. Is that correct? Moving forward? Okay, all right. With that, I need a motion to recess. Carolyn, go.
What's the information you're missing for the property value guarantee plan decision? What are you waiting for?
The information is everything that we may possibly get in testimony. Both their testimony, Mr. Lucans, additional interested parties may have additional information to add to that. As far as, not speaking for the whole board, but speaking, I guess, in my thought, we need to gather as much possible information as we can before we make a concrete decision on this. So a realistic possibility is it will be post this hearing. All right. With that, motion to recess. Bits of motions. Can I get a second? Huesman seconds.